Good evening. I call to order the January 11, 2021, 5:30 PM, Special Public Tax Budget Hearing Meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence your cellphones and electronic devices. I'm going to ask Board Member Lindy if you would lead us in the pledge.
Thanks, President Jones. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Lindy. Okay, Ms. Wagner, please call and roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Bowers?
Here.
Mr. Lindy?
Here.
Mr. Messer?
Present.
Mr. Morosky?
Here.
President Jones?
Here. Thank you. Members of the public who wish to speak at today's special public tax budget hearing may do so by clicking the chat button, submitting your name, your affiliation to the district, your school community, and your contact information if you want a direct response to any questions you might have. In keeping with the board's standard practice for hearing the public, you must click the camera icon when you are recognized to speak. You may begin to click the chat button now. We respectfully ask that comments not related to this tax budget hearing be presented at the regular board meeting session later this evening. Okay, so I'll now invite Professor Wagner to come to present the tax budget.
Good evening, everyone. Actually, I'm going to have Kevin Ashley, our Director of Financial Reporting and Transparency, do the presentation tonight. He's done an absolute fabulous job putting this tax budget together, so, Mr. Ashley, whenever you're ready.
Thank you. Good evening. It's good to see you all today. So, we have a slide presentation, and then you also have a hard copy report on the tax budget, which has more detail included. So, Rob, if you could go to the next slide, please. So, the purpose and some background behind the tax budget, it is an annual requirement of the Ohio revise code, and we complete the form in accordance with, Hamilton County uses a modified format, and so, we follow that reporting for this report as well. All the school districts in the state of Ohio must prepare a tax budget each January to provide a basis for the county budget commission's review of the next calendar year's local tax revenue rates in millage. Next slide, please. So, this is a brief summary of all the outstanding debt for the district. This actually relates to page 11 of the more detailed report, if you have that in front of you. It's broken down into two categories. The first line relates to voted, voted debt that's tied directly to the bond levy, and then the other categories are unvoted, which are basically funded through the general fund. So, for the bond levy, that all relates back to the facility's master plan from back in 2005, 2006. Originally, that outstanding amount was about $480 million. We're showing the balances here on a calendar year, so as of 1/1/22, the outstanding balance on those related instruments are $230.5 million. The unvoted items, the Q Scoobies, which were qualified school construction bonds, those are related to energy conservation projects and were issued in 2010, '11, and '12, and that affected about 40 buildings in the district. And so, the outstanding balance on all three of those is $50 million. The next category was originally done in 2002, was part of the 15 new buildings completed at that time, and the outstanding, it's been refunded a couple times or partially refunded, but the outstanding amount now is $62.9. The next category is a COPS issue that was done in 2018. To identify COPS is certificates of participation, and they sort of work as a lease purchase debt instrument. And so, that project was for the Mercy Acquisition and Improvement in Cairns as well. And then, the last one there is another COPS issue that goes back to 2006. That one is actually, those debt instruments were, we consider them county-city funded. The city funding is not coming through now, but, which was part of the debt agreement, but the county funding will continue to come. And so, that total outstanding is $456.8. So, next slide, please. So, just to highlight some specifics, the general fund revenues are estimated and restated on a calendar year basis. So, because of the tax levies being on a calendar year basis, that's why there's a breakdown at that level. These are based on the five-year forecast. The only difference between the November forecast and current is the county did go through a triennial update in the values, property values, and they sent us new values. We really have no control over those, but those are built into these estimates as well. And then, also, the bond fund revenues, again, the tax revenues associated with the voted debt, and as well as the credits for home set and rollback exemption, which go along with the property taxes. Next slide, please. So, the big question is, do our estimated revenues cover the debt obligations? This slide relates to the voted bond debt. For calendar year '21, the estimated revenues are $33.9, which is the property tax and the home set and rollback, and then, the principal interest and county fees related to taxes is $30.7. And then, for '22, calendar year '22, the revenues are estimated a little bit more at $34.1 million, and payments are approximately the same, $30.7. So, we are on the positive side there. So, we'll go to the next slide. This relates to unvoted debt, and it is not a required part of tax budget. But as part of the district's effort for transparency in the Treasurer's Office, historically have presented these numbers as well, just to kind of make sure everyone sees where we are as far as debt, at least once a year, we're looking at these. So, the unvoted debt estimated revenues for calendar year '21 are $28.1 million. Principal interest expense is just less than that, $27.2. And for calendar year '22, $28.2 million in revenues and $27.4 million in expenditures. And I'll just highlight here, as far as revenues, there are no tax, no direct tax revenues related to these issues. As we mentioned, they're transferred from the general fund. But then, so the biggest part of the revenue here is the transfer from the general fund. There's also some interest revenue, and then, the county contributions. Next slide, please. Nope, that's the last slide. So, the other thing I did want to mention, the board will be approving this tax budget in one of your later meetings, and once it is approved, then it will be filed with the county auditor to meet that requirement. The deadline's the 20th, but it'll probably be filed tomorrow, so. And that concludes my presentation.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Ashley. Open it up for questions and comments from the board. Mr. Messer?
Yeah, you know, the only thing that, you know, as we're talking about this subject, one thing that for sure has been a topic of conversation, a little bit in the news, and definitely a lot in social media, is the revaluation of property throughout Hamilton County. And, you know, I don't know if the Treasurer or Mr. Ashley would like to address this, but I think it's always important to remind the community how this works with our fixed sum levies, et cetera, because what I was seeing out in the public was, wow, CPS is going to get a lot more money. Wow, this is just more money for CPS. Well, when we have the fixed sum levies, obviously, that doesn't help us a whole lot. Even if values go up, we're still getting the same amount. So, I just, I don't know if they want to address any of that, but since it's been such a big topic, I'm sure others have seen that, it might be good to address that now for our public.
I mean, I think that is a-
Do you want to take a stab at it?
I think that is a really good point, because I believe in Hamilton County, I know in some counties, the values went up about 15%. And so, as you mentioned, on the surface, that sounds like, oh, we're going to get a 15% bump. There is a little bump the first year, but what typically happens as well is you'll get appeals to the budget commission, and some of those values will be revised down, and that can also affect how much we end up getting at the end of the day.
But, but Mr. Messer is absolutely right. Our fixed sum levies do not fluctuate with the increase in property values, because the voters approved a fixed sum to raise. So, it's not, the impact of increase, even in the first year, is not as big as people might think it is.
Thank you. Great question. Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, it also doesn't help that the explanation letter for all the revaluations does point out bond levy votes, and schools are getting a bunch of money, and it's the usual Mr. Rhodes's approach to explaining the additional monies. We tend to take it on the chin on that. If we can, staying in that same vein that Member Messer raised, a lot of recent news from city council regarding property rates, I don't know if we're familiar with that, but the significant reduction, I don't know if the Treasurer, Mr. Ashley, or whomever, maybe some board members might be able to speak about it. I know it was a major point that was raised by Councilmember David Mann. Do we know anything about that? I know we've dealt with the certain parts of city efforts regarding property enticements, if you will, for developers. Are we familiar with what the city's planning on doing regarding property rates?
I haven't seen the media that you spoke to, but I'll be, I'll certainly research it.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Okay. Are there any other questions or comments? Any further discussion? Okay, great. So, we are now at the item on our agenda for hearing the public. The board prides itself on being as transparent and open as possible, consistent with the state's direction to minimize public gatherings. We are convening this video conference call to include opportunity for public comment. Once the request has been granted, you will be invited to enter. Please click on the camera icon to go interactive. Each speaker will have two minutes to speak and may only speak once. When the timer goes off, your two minutes are up. We ask that your public commentary be respectful of all those listening in. After speaking, you will briefly see the welcome screen again as you transition back to the live stream meeting. Okay, do we have any requests to speak?
Not this evening, President Jones.
None. Okay. All righty. So, are there any, any further discussion or assignments or anything of that nature? Ms. Bolton?
Yeah, just to follow up, as the Treasurer mentioned, she would be looking into that reference regarding city property rates and taxes, and just making a formal assignment. I appreciate her doing that.
Wonderful. Anything else? Any other assignments? Okay, so, having no other business to come before the board, I declare the meeting adjourned, and we will start promptly at 6 o'clock for our next meeting, which is the organizational meeting. Thank you. Meeting is adjourned. Be about ready to come on. We have about a minute. Is Mr. Lindy there? There you are. Okay.
I'm here.
All right. Okay. Everybody ready now?
Yes.
Let's get through, let's get through this in a half hour, okay? All right. So, why don't we go ahead and go live?
We are actually still live.
Thank you.
Okay, live through the next meeting.
Okay, good evening. Per Board by law 0151 for organizational meeting, and Ohio revise code 3313.14 for the annual organizational meeting, and as outgoing president, I will begin the meeting as president pro temp until election of a president takes place further down on the agenda. I call to order the January 11, 2021 organizational meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. I call to order the January eleventh, two thousand twenty-one organizational meeting of the Cincinnati Board of Education. We welcome everyone and request everyone in the audience to please silence their cell phones. I'm going to ask, uh, board member Bates if you would lead us in the pledge, please.
Sure. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
To the flag.
Of the states of America and to the republic for which it stands.
It stands.
One with, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Present.
Ms. Bolton?
Present.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yeah, here.
Mr. Lindy?
Here.
Mr. Messer?
Present.
Mr. Rosky?
Here.
President Jones?
Here. Per Board by law, zero one fifty-two, officers, election of officers shall be by roll call majority vote of members. Where no such majority exists on the first vote, a second vote shall be cast for the two candidates who receive the greatest number of votes. And it is my understanding we have, uh, some interest, so, uh, nominations, nominations are now in order for the office of president for the year two thousand twenty. Um, Mr. Morosky?
I'd like to nominate, um, Carolyn Jones to serve once again as president of the board.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Morosky. Ms. Bolton?
Yes, I'd like to withdraw my name and nominate for president and nominate Melanie Bates.
Okay, nomination for Melanie Bates? Are there any other nominations? Any further nominations? Okay, nominations are now closed. So we have, uh, identified for nominations Carolyn Jones and Melanie Bates. Treasure Wagner, please call the roll for the nomination of Carolyn Jones as president.
Mrs. Bates? I'm sorry, couldn't hear you.
No.
Ms. Bolton?
No.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
We didn't hear you. Ms. Wagner?
Yeah, Mr. Messer?
So can, can I ask a question? Are we not gonna have any discussion or let the candidates kind of talk or anything like that, like we've done in the past?
Um, we can open for, uh, I believe there is. Okay, in the past, I believe you're right, Ms. Mr. Messer, that we actually had a motion to approve the nomination. So what we might, you're, you're right. I, I just didn't have that on my script. So if you, if, if we want to take this time to back up a step, um, it, it is not a, a motion. I don't think we need a motion, but I, I, we can open up for discussion should either nominee want to, uh, have an opportunity to say a few words. Is everybody in agreement with that? Are we okay with that? Okay. All right. So given that Carolyn Jones was nominated first, uh, let me just say, I, I mean, you know, in, in typical fashion, I've, you know, I've been president for a few years now, and I think every year I say the same thing. There's not a whole lot much that I wanna say to support my, my nomination, other than the fact that I think you guys know me well. You know how I work. You know what I will give to, to this position. And, um, you know, what, whatever happens in terms of the vote, um, I am gonna be one hundred percent in support of, um, whoever is in this position. So that's really all I need to say. Okay. So the next nominee was Melanie Bates?
Yes, and I, I appreciate the opportunity to be nominated. Thank you so much for the, the vote of confidence in me, as, as you have always shown me that confidence and respect as a fellow board member. And I do have a great deal of respect for Carolyn Jones, and, uh, I certainly would support her if she were to be elected again. Uh, we have seven leaders on this board, uh, and all seven of us are capable of this position. And I wanted to make myself available so that if you, uh, saw that I would be, uh, an appropriate facilitator for this year's meetings, I am happy and willing to serve. So I wanted to, uh, let you know, also, you, you all certainly know me and the way I, I work and I, and I operate, and I believe I'm, I'm fair and a straight shooter and a good listener, and I would be honored to serve.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. Mr. Messer, question?
Yeah, and I don't know, this is the part I don't know that we've done before, but is there an opportunity for discussion, you know, within the board? You know, as we make a decision, or is this pretty much, you know, you just vote and, and move on?
Well, my opinion, unless, you know, and I'm just responding, anybody can respond. I think, I think what, you, you are correct in that in years past, that we have opened it up for discussion, but it is pretty cut and dry in terms of how the vote occurs and what have you. I'm not sure what the nature of your discussion would be, but, uh, personally, I'm open to that if you want. I know that there's a lot more discussion warranted as we move down into the committee structures, which has been pretty typical. But if you would like to open it up for questions or comments and further discussion, um, then I would say, uh, if, if everybody's in agreement with that, we can do that.
Yeah, and if I could just add, you know, I had put my name in originally, and, um, you know, I know that there have, there were some calls backwards and forwards and different things within the board, and I chose this time, you know, uh, leave it what it is. And I think in talking with people in the community and that type of thing, you know, one thing for sure I heard, and I even heard this today at lunchtime, was we're kind of in the midst of a pretty important time, and I think there was some feeling that maybe it doesn't make sense to do wholesale changes, um, throughout the board, uh, given the climate that we're in, and I don't think, um, twenty twenty, uh, can ever be looked at as a typical year for, you know, a president, you know, to do what they wanna do, et cetera. It's almost like it, we kind of got into a quicksand of survival mode, and not that, uh, the leadership wasn't important to make sure the board was moving in the right direction, but, um, I just wonder if this year's a little different, given the fact that we're in the midst of pandemic, I guess it's just uh, my comments I wanted to make.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Messer. Um, other comments, Ms. Bates?
And just to kind of add to that, I, I do know that we are in the midst of unprecedented times, but we've had other unprecedented times. In my twenty years here, we've had the facilities master plan. We've had, you know, uh, superintendencies that, uh, were decided. So it seems like every year brings something unprecedented, so that is important. Uh, this year, we do have stability on the board because it wasn't an election year. So we have that in our, in our, uh, to our advantage as well. So I do believe we're a very stable board and that a switch would not necessarily be a big change. So that is, uh, why I wanted to offer my services.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. Any other comments? Okay, thank you. So we will, uh, go back, go back and review, uh, where we were with the vote. Ms., Ms. Wagner?
Um, yes, if we, so if we begin again voting for president, um, I'll just, in case somebody wanted to change their mind, I'll start at the beginning. Mrs. Bates?
Uh, no.
This, right, this, this is for the nomination for Carolyn Jones, right?
That's correct.
Okay.
Ms. Bolton?
No.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Okay, so in that vote, uh, there is the, there is, uh, if the vote was five, three, that is, that is the necess, five, two, I'm sorry, that is the necessary vote, um, for the, uh, nomination of the president. And I do not believe, and, and Mr. Hoyn can correct me, or, uh, Treasure Wagner, I do not believe we need a roll call, uh, not a roll call, but a, uh, motion for this, since we already had the vote. Is that correct? Okay. That's it. Okay, thank you. All right, so at this point, we're gonna, um, have Treasure Wagner do the oath of office for the president.
Okay, so if you can raise your right hand and repeat after me. Um, I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I, Carolyn Jones, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
I didn't hear you. I'm sorry.
It's okay. Um, and that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
Discharge the duties of the president of the Board of Education.
Discharge the duties of the president of the Board of Education.
Of the Cincinnati City Schools.
Of the Cincinnati City Schools.
School District. Of the city of Cincinnati, Ohio.
Of the city of Cincinnati, Ohio.
During my continuance in office.
During my continuance in office.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you so much. And thank you, I appreciate it. And this is the time where I can make, it can offer just a, a couple of comments here, and I promise that I won't take up too much time. Um, first of all, let me say thank you to my board colleagues who, uh, who worked real hard in, in this vision that we have to make sure that our kids receive the best education that is offered to and available to them. Um, I wanna say that I have the utmost respect for each one of you as an individual and collectively. And I've learned a lot from each of you, and, uh, Ms. Bates, I will have to say that of all people, I think you keep me honest more than anybody, and I would hope that you would continue to do the same, and I always appreciate your support, um, even on your early seven thirty AM calls sometimes, which you've done a couple times in my tenure, in my past tenure. But I really do appreciate, um, all that you have to offer, and, and like I said, I've learned a lot from everybody. Um, so thank you for entrusting me again, one more year, um, with being, as we say, a leader among leaders. And, uh, I promise that I will continue to work with integrity. Um, I will continue to work to be as inclusive as I can. I will continue to work, um, uh, for the best interest of this, um, board in representing and advocating for our children and being accountable to the public. Um, I'm not gonna go into a long blurb about, uh, sort of the past and what we've been dealing with, but I will say this much. Um, we have, we have gone through a lot, and Ms. Bates, uh, referenced that. We, we've had lots of huge paths in front of us. Uh, more recently, as we know, because we're still dealing with this, is the onset, the onset of the COVID pandemic and working through that. And our superintendent so eloquently last week talked about, um, all of the accomplishments. And I'm not gonna go into those. Um, you know, we, we've made great strides. We have lots to be proud of. What I would like to say, though, is on Saturday, when we have our work session, we have an opportunity to really make some headway into what our new vision will look like as, as Cincinnati Public Schools and, um, what our, what our new vision would look like, and, um, particularly as it relates to how we educate kids coming out of the COVID pandemic. And I look forward, um, to continue our work in, in the positive way, and, um, rest assured that, uh, Saturday will be eventful. We have an agenda full, in case you haven't seen it, but, um, look forward to, uh, working on that vision. So thank, thank you much. Okay, so if we're ready to move on, um, again, per Board by law, zero one five two for officers, election of officers shall be by roll call majority vote of members. Where no such majority exists in the first vote, a second vote shall be cast for the two candidates who receive the greatest number of votes. Nominations are now in order for the office of vice president for the year two thousand twenty-one. Ms. Bowers?
I nominate board member Morosky.
Okay, Michael Morosky. Are there any other nominations? Ms. Bolton?
Yes, I'm, uh, withdrawing my name for vice president and nominating, uh, Melanie Bates.
Melanie Bates? Are there any other nominations?
I would like to continue to serve with you, Carolyn.
Ryan Messer? Okay, are there any other nominations? So we have, uh, nominated Mike Morosky, Melanie Bates, and Ryan Messer. If there are no further nominations, nominations are now closed. Uh, this would be the time to offer our nominees the opportunity to make comments. Uh, and we will start with the first nominee, uh, Mr. Morosky.
Thank you, President Jones, and thank you, Ms. Bowers, uh, for the nomination. Similar to what's been said, um, by everyone, I think there's a consensus that we all enjoy working with one another, and we have done some pretty enormous things and impressive and amazing things for the district, our kids and our families in the cities. Whoever's vice president, not to beat a dead horse, happy to support whoever it is. Um, but I'm gonna be nominated. Thank you again, Ms. Bowers. Um, you know, last year was the first year I served in a leadership position as chair of policy, um, and I felt ready after three years on this board to put my name out there, um, again, um, to sit, um, next to the president and to serve in that role. Um, Ryan has certainly served, our vice president Messer has certainly served with great integrity the past couple of years, and so happy to support you again if it comes to that, or Ms. Bates as well. Um, but I enjoyed serving as chair of the policy committee. Um, I feel I have a lot I can offer. Um, save the last meeting, I've had perfect attendance. And so, um, I'm a team player, though, and, uh, not, again, to beat one more dead horse. You all know me. You know I'm gonna, you're gonna know where I stand, uh, if nothing else, even if you disagree. So thanks again, Ms. Bowers. So thanks again, Ms. Bowers, I appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Murawski. Melanie Bates?
Yes, and I won't repeat what I said earlier, you heard me, but I would honor to serve as Vice President with Carolyn.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. Mr. Messer?
Yes, well, you know, Carolyn, I think you and I have developed a very good working relationship over these past couple of years. And, you know, I think I would like to continue to serve and help the district in that role in 2021.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Messer. Okay, so, Treasurer Wagner, please call the roll for the vote for Mr. Murawski. Now, just for clarification on process, and Mr. Hoyn, you can hone in on this as well. We have three nominees. So if, if one individual gets four votes, then, then the, then that person would become the Vice President. In the event, if, in the event there is not that four vote, then the two people who get the most votes at that point will go into a runoff, and we would revote. Is that correct, Mr. Hoyn?
So the, the successful nominee must have a majority, not just a plurality. So there's any number of vote combinations that could happen here, and the only guidance from the state is to continue working and trying to collaborate until there's a successful, a nominee with, with at least four votes.
Right, the person who went, who wins the nomination must have four votes. But in the event there's a split, like a three, two, two, or whatever, we would have to have a runoff, is the way the, the bylaws state, correct?
That's right, with, with, again, and I don't mean to be nitpicky, but a three, two, two, there wouldn't be two candidates to do a runoff.
I know.
Continued discussion, and then another vote until there's four, a, a majority in favor of one candidate.
Okay, so you stay right where you are, don't you go anywhere right now, okay? All right, Ms. Bolton, I saw your hand.
Yeah, I, I appreciate the, the guidance from, from Mr. Hoyn. I'm still a little confused regarding what our protocol says.
Well, actually, I, I read it verbatim from the protocol. And, and I, I, in regard to what, Ms. Bolton?
If there's not, and I'm not, I'm assuming there will be a majority, you know, but, but I'm, but based upon you reading the protocol versus what Mr. Hoyn says, I just need a little clarification. Because Mr. Hoyn is quoting the state, and it seemed like, or at least he referenced the state, he didn't quote the state, and you were quoting from the protocol.
Right.
Could you, could you read what you read again, it's, it's, it sounded familiar to me.
Yes, what is, what is stated in the Board Bylaws 0152, verbatim. Election of officers shall be by roll call majority vote of members. Where no such majority exists on the first vote, a second vote shall be cast for the two candidates who receive the greatest number of votes. So that's our protocol. But I think what, what Mr. Hoyn is saying is, in the event that there is a three, two, two, that, you know, my assumption, Mr. Hoyn, is that the person with three votes would be one person who would proceed. But then maybe the runoff, there has to be a runoff, or we could have more discussion, however we choose to negotiate that, between the two, the persons, the persons with the two votes each. Until it is decided or voted, which one of those would proceed with the three. Now, I may be wrong, Ms. Bolton.
Yes, and I think that works if it is the top two, where you have three, and then you would have you know, the same vote tote for the second and the third person, because they would have the same numbers.
Yes.
But gen, but generally, if it's, if there were three of names, and one had three, and, or whatever, and one had two, and one had whatever, it's the top two, it's just in this case, if it's a two, two with the second, then it would be all three again. But without that all three, or that tie with second and third, it would be the top two people.
I, if I'm understanding you correctly, I think you're, yes.
Okay. That's where I like to end things, if I'm correct.
Okay. All right, so we're gonna start the roll call. Treasurer Wagner, please call the roll call for the vote for Melanie Bates for Vice President.
Didn't it be Mr. Murawski, because he was nominated first?
He was nominated first, you're absolutely correct, he was. The, the vote is for Mr. Murawski.
Mrs. Bates?
No.
Ms. Ms. Bolton?
No.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
No.
Mr. Murawski?
Yes.
Carolyn Jones, President Jones, excuse me.
No. Okay, so the vote on that was three yes, three yes, and four no's.
No.
Correct.
Okay, so, the next, the next vote, roll call vote, hold on, I'm getting confused here, Mr. Hoyn.
So, Mr. Messer?
Ms. Bates is, Ms. Bates is next. The roll call, we need to do the roll call vote for Ms. Bates.
Okay, you ready?
Yes.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowers?
We didn't hear you, Ms. Bowers. I didn't hear Ms. Bowers.
No.
Mr. Lindy?
Treasurer Wagner, can I abstain? I wanted to vote for, I got confused because there are three people, I wanted to vote for one and abstain from the other two. Is that allowed?
I don't think so.
I believe so, though, Mr. Hoyn, he can abstain.
You're, you're, but he's voting on each person, right? Can he, the question is, can he abstain on one? I guess you can abstain on any vote that you, where you don't want to vote.
I, I believe, this is Dan, I believe yes, but you'll still need a majority, you'll still need four votes for the successful nominee. Or yes.
I'm gonna abstain on, on this vote and the next one.
Mr. Messer?
No.
Mr. Murawski?
No.
President Jones?
No. So the vote on for Melanie Bates is two yes, four no, one abstain?
Correct.
Okay, so, Treasurer Wagner, please call the roll for the vote for Ryan Messer.
Mrs. Bates?
No.
Ms. Bolton?
No.
Mrs. Bowers?
No.
Mr. Lindy?
Abstain.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Murawski?
No.
President Jones?
Yes. Okay, so we have, for Ryan Messer, we have yes votes, two, no vote, four, and one abstention. We're in the situation that we just talked about, right? Mr. Hoyn, okay, Mr. Hoyn, we need your guidance on this.
I, I think that's right. Effectively, it's a three, two, two, I think, which means that, I, I think that it requires some further discussion and collaboration, perhaps somebody withdrawing their name, and then a revote at some, when the time's appropriate.
So would the revote occur with the, the people, with the individuals who have the two votes?
So if, if, if none of the candidates, I think, withdraw their names, then I think it would be, again, another vote with all three, or there's, there is no statutory way of determining, very frankly.
Okay, so we have to talk among ourselves, amongst ourselves, within, within the group, to figure it out, right? Okay, so, open it up, the board, board members, I think the, the question now is, you know, what do we want our process to be for deciding these, this vote? So we have one person who has a majority, but, who, not a majority, who has more votes than the three, but has not reached a majority. Then we have the second and third person who have, each have two yeses, and one, and each have one abstention. Ms. Bolton?
And, and this is, of course, interesting and unfortunate that we're doing this, but at any rate, after a very unified year under difficult circumstances, but we're cool, and we'll all still be cool. But I would like, Mr. Hoyn, to explain abstentions and their role in creating, what do, what do, if you abstain, what does that count for? If I recall, in, in Robert's Rules, the, the abstention begins to be something else as registered as a vote for Robert's Rules. And I don't, it's not in our protocol, but, and we loosely pay attention to Robert's Rules, but could you please explain what abstentions mean in Robert's Rules?
Yeah, I, rather than looking at Robert's Rules, I, I'm back to looking at our bylaws, which say that elections of officers shall be, shall be by roll call majority vote of the members physically present, taken by the treasurer. And, and I believe it has been our practice that, what, what that means is, it's not a plurality, which is what you have here, but a, but a majority that's needed to, to be a successful nominee for an officer of the board.
I, I appreciate that, but could you look at, see what Robert's Rules is regarding abstentions?
I can, to see if that sheds any light.
Yeah, mine, I don't know that it does, I doubt that it does, but I, I do think there's something special about abstentions that, at least in some of these votes, usual, for Robert's Rules. I'd look it up, but I, it's sitting in one place for one period of time here, I've actually lost my phone within six feet of me, so I can't zoom it, or, or Google it, or anything. Thanks. Oh, no, I've lost my phone sitting here.
So, if I could ask this question while Mr. Hoyn is checking on a couple of things, I, I just want to ask, not that, and I'm not, Mr. Lindy, I'm not passing any judgment on your right to abstain, but just curious to know if you mind sharing, is, is your abstention based, I'm not quite sure the, the rationale behind the abstention. Does that make sense? Is it because your thinking is, you know who you want to vote for, and you only want to vote for that person, or what? Because this really is about trying to get it to a first and a, two people in order to have a runoff where clearly there would be a majority. I don't know if that makes sense, but.
I, I, you know, truthfully, President Jones, I didn't have a, a strong principled reason for doing it. Just, I don't like three-way votes, I like paired votes, you know, and so I was gonna do it easier on the President vote, where we had two people than it was for me on this one. If it will help move us forward, I'm happy to make mine a yes vote for Ryan, which would take us down to Mike and Ryan, for the two final ones.
Well, my intention was not to say you had to make a choice, I certainly don't want that presented out.
I feel fully empowered to make up my own mind, I promise, and I also want to be generative and help people forward. I, I have no problem with that.
Okay. So, Mr. Hoyn, are you waiting to speak, or what?
Yeah, I mean, I, I'm not sure this is that helpful, but this is from Robert's Rules. Quote, "While it is the duty of every member who has an opinion on the question to express it by vote, yet he cannot be compelled to do so, he may prefer to abstain from voting, though he knows the effect is the same as if he voted on the prevailing side." I'm not sure that adds anything to the discussion.
Okay. So one way, I mean, there is a suggestion that we try to work it out, if somebody expresses that they want to drop out, then it would narrow it down to two, or, that's one option. The second option would be to have a runoff of the, the two individuals who have the fewest votes, and then take a person from that, or the third option would be one, that Mr. Lindy could change his, his abstention. Is there a rule, Mr. Hoyn, about abstentions? Do, do, abstentions do not count as part of the majority? The majority or the minority, right? It's just plain like a no vote?
That's right.
Okay. So in that case, it would be a no vote. So those are the options, we, again, three options that we have, and I look to the will of the board for us to decide. Ms. Bolton, are you still with us? Oh, there you are, yes, Ms. Bolton?
Could, could, Mr., and I don't mean to be laborious, but I, what was the reference to the prevailing majority or prevailing vote, Mr. Hoyn, that you mentioned regarding?
Yeah, that's from our own board bylaws, and I can give you a citation, I went away from that, but I can get right back to it.
That somehow, I recall, abstention, you said it, is something about the prevailing, when the vote's completed, it goes towards the prevailing vote?
Oh, are you, with the reference to Robert's Rules?
That's right.
It says, "While it is the duty of every member who has an opinion on the question to express it by his vote, yet he cannot be compelled to do so, he may prefer to abstain from voting, though he knows the effect is the same as if he had voted on the prevailing side."
Okay, because I know we've had to do that before, where an abstention will count toward the, the prevailing vote, or what have you. What does that mean?
Well, in this case, Mr. Lindy has abstained twice, so I, I don't think you can draw anything from that.
Right.
But, but in other, but in other board action, that's what an abstention is supposed to, to be. I mean, it doesn't, I'm not worried about tonight, as much as I, I don't want people to think abstentions are necessarily only recorded as abstentions. They are, they, they go along with the prevailing vote in Robert's Rules.
Fair, I, I think that's correct, and accurately interprets the, the Robert's Rules. But, you know, in our, in our practice, most votes do not require a majority. So, you know, in the past, when we've had a resolution that has been three, three, let's say, with one abstention, then it would be, I, I believe we, we say that's not then it would be, I believe we say that's not a passing resolution, that that resolution has not passed. So, right, I mean, you could, you could assume that the abstention in that case follows the no votes.
Right.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, okay. Any other, any other thoughts about one of those three options? Because we have to move on this.
I do, I do think, Carolyn, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
I do think a simple, to me seems, simple way to move this forward would be for me to move my vote from an abstention into a vote for Ryan, which would make Mike and Ryan each have three votes, which would then give us a runoff between those two. If people want to do that differently, happy to, but I think that's one, one easy way to move this forward.
Okay. So if, Mr. Lindy, as the abstaining vote is choosing to cast his vote yes for Mr. Messer. And if we're accepting that that's his choice and he can do it, that leaves the top two votes, vote getters, for Mike Morosky and Ryan Messer. And, okay, so is that, can we move on with the runoff vote for that, for those two?
That's the protocol.
Please, I need people to say yes or no. Are we good moving on?
Yes.
Yes.
The protocol, yes.
All right, thank you. All right, so Treasurer Wagner, please administer, please call the roll for the vote for Mike Morosky as president.
As vice president.
Vice president.
Vice president.
No, thank you.
Mrs. Bates?
No.
Ms. Bolton?
No.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
No.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
No. Okay, so there are three yeses and four no's. Do we need to do the second vote for the record? Yes, okay. Treasurer Wagner, please call the roll for the vote for Ryan Messer as vice president.
Mrs. Bates?
Yes.
Ms. Bolton?
Yes.
Mrs. Bowers?
No.
Mr. Lindy?
No.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
No.
President Jones?
Yes. So given that there is a four yes and three no's for Mr. Messer, the vice president is elected. Congratulations, Mr. Messer. Okay, thank you. Thank you, board members, for enduring that process. Looks like implications for a look at policy, right? Okay, we might consider making some changes or tightening it up. Okay, so Treasurer Wagner, please administer the oath of office to the 2021 vice president.
Certainly. So I, so if you'll repeat after me, raise your right hand, repeat after me. I state your name, do solemnly swear.
I, Ryan Messer, do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Ohio.
And that I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
And I will faithfully, honestly, and impartially.
Discharge the duties of vice president of the Board of Education.
Discharge the duties of the vice president of the Board of Education.
Of the Cincinnati City School District.
Of the Cincinnati City School District.
Of the City of Cincinnati, Ohio, in its own office.
And the City of Cincinnati, Ohio.
During my continuance in office.
During my continuance in office.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Mr. Messer. And this is your opportunity. It is your opportunity now to offer a few remarks.
Well, I don't think I have anything else grand to add, but I appreciate the opportunity to serve again. And, you know, it, obviously, 2020 wasn't a year that any of us anticipated, but I truly believe in all aspects of our life, anyone, it's going to be a year of rebirth and regeneration. And I'm excited to be a part of that here with CPS, and I look forward to working again with Carolyn. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Messer. Okay, so we will proceed with our committee structure. Per Board Bylaw 0155, for committees and board protocol, committee assignments were requested by all board members at the end of last year. Now, at this organizational meeting, we will recommend our committee structures and assignments for board approval. Oh, here's, I'm keeping track of kind of where we are with these assignments. And it looks like that once I remove my name from the committees, we have finance, finance committee, finance committee and student achievement committee seem solid with three people on those committees, those people who wanted those committees. And then there are one, two, three individuals who selected two committees each. And then there's one, two, there's, I'm sorry, there's four people who chose two committees, and there's two people who chose all of the committees. So I think that for the people who chose all of the committees, you might want to give a look and maybe decide and prioritize which committees you want, and it'll make us easier to make those assignments. Ms. Bolton?
Per your suggestion and noticing how many people, rightfully so, want to be on health and safety, and I want to thank Mrs. Bates for leading us through this first year of that committee. I'll withdraw, of course, from the health and safety committee and would like to keep my name on the finance and student achievement committee if possible.
Okay. Okay, so that leaves us on health and safety, Bates, Bowers, Messer, and Morosky.
And Carolyn.
Bowers, Ms. Bowers.
Yes, I would like to remove my name from policy committee, and I will leave three. No, I will leave two, because Ms. Bolton, you just removed your name, Ms. Bolton, from policy also?
From health and safety, yes, ma'am.
But not policy?
Yeah, I can, I'm happy to do that, too.
No, I want you to leave yours in policy.
That would be cool.
Hold on, hold on, hold on, hold on. Ms. Bolton will have to decide that. Ms. Bowers, I will do to say whether or not, where you stay.
I love your advice, Ms. Bowers.
Ms. Bowers?
Yes, I want to remove my name from policy committee.
Okay. All right, so if you, Ms. Bolton, now I'm coming back to you, remove yourself as well from policy.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Okay, so that leaves two people on policy. All right, so then on health and safety, we still have one, two, three. Okay, let me back up. Ms. Bowers, are you staying on student achievement?
Yes.
Okay.
Ms. Jones.
What you're asking for is student achievement and health and safety.
That's correct.
Okay, and then Ms. Hey, let me look at this. All right, so we have Bates, Bowers, Messer, and Morosky on health and safety, that's four. We have one, two, three people on student achievement. So somebody needs to go to, somebody needs to go to policy.
So who's on student achievement?
Student achievement is, okay, Bolton, Bowers, and Lindy.
Because I would swap health and safety for student achievement.
That, that. Okay, Bowers. Well, I don't, here's the deal, that we have four, we have one too many, there are one person short on policy, and we have one person too many on health and safety. So there's really, I mean, swapping off isn't really going to get us to that. We need one person from health and safety to agree to be on policy. And I'm hoping we don't have to spend a whole lot of time, because I'll just assign if we have to. But I don't want to do that.
President Jones?
Yes.
Quick question, on the sheet, it did have ad hoc over to the far right.
Yes, we're not ad hoc, I'm sorry, and I meant to address that when we started. Ad hoc is an assigned committee that we bring as we need, so we're going to drop that from the committee structure.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. Okay.
Absolutely, thank you for reminding.
Well, I would say that if I can't swap to student achievement since I was the founder of health and safety, I'd stay on that.
So you want to stay on, you want to stay on health and safety? Ms. Bowers, you were on, you put your name on one, two, three committees.
Yeah.
Right?
Yes.
So the two committees that you want are student achievement and health and safety, and you want to come off of policy, which means you shifted committees, correct?
Right, because I was on policy for two years. I'm ready to switch around a little bit.
Okay. All right, gang, what are we going to do? Again, I don't want to spend a whole lot of time. I think Mr. Messer, last year, Mr. Messer conceded and gave in and agreed to go to policy, and Mr. Morosky has not been on policy as well, is that correct? I mean, not policy, health and safety.
No, I haven't been on health and safety. I wouldn't be much use coming off of health and safety to go to policy, though, because that's the other committee.
You are already on policy.
Right. You know, if it's helpful. Going to say, if it's helpful for me to drop off health and safety, I will. I don't know if I go anywhere else, or if I didn't do that, then it's all done, because it looks like there are three for finance, two for policy, three for student achievement, and then, so, I mean, I can drop off health and safety, but we still need somebody on policy.
We need somebody on policy. So if you, if you don't want to go to policy, then maybe somebody will agree to trade with you. I don't think, I think that's, people don't want to do that, but we had this same issue last year. We couldn't get three people on policy.
That's what I'm saying, somebody has to, somebody has to, like, I'm not helping, my point, I'm not helpful. I'm already on policy. I would love to actually continue chairing policy for the committee to decide. So I'm already on policy, but I'll drop off health, health, safety.
Okay.
But we, I need one more committee member. Maybe Ms. Bolton would love to keep her name there.
Ms. Bolton wants to go on student achievement, yes. Ms. Bolton?
Yes, do we have, is the protocol requires everybody having the same kind of workload? Or is there a need for anybody to do? I mean, does everybody have two so far?
Everybody, let me see.
There's, can I? My, my second year, Ms. Bolton, I was only on, wow, one committee, because I started a new job, and I wanted to have a little extra time to focus on that.
Yeah.
And there's no, there's no protocol in the bylaws that says it has to be two.
No, just that, yeah, I mean, I'm being three.
Or however, sorry, yeah, or, yeah, it has to be like equal across the board or anything.
Yeah. And we have three, we do, we have, we have two on policy, and there needs to be three, and we have four on health and safety, and we, so one of those folks has to come off. And, and, and the three new people on that, Ms. Bates has been there one year, the three new people on that would be Bowers, Messer, and Morosky.
Like I said, I'll take my name off, and that's done. There's three people. So.
Okay, so then if we take your name off, we still need a person on policy.
That I'm no help with, because I cannot clone myself, or I would have two votes on policy, but I can't.
Oh, sure you can.
I'll figure it out.
You won't want to hear this, but if I would be willing to be a third person on policy if Mr. Morosky is going to be chair.
Works.
What? On policy?
I'm just saying, I said you wouldn't like to hear this, but I'm willing to be on policy if Mr. Morosky is going to be chair. Then everybody has three, and somebody has, yeah. I, because I, the first time I was ever on policy, Mrs. Frinley made me be on it, and then Mr. Coons made me be on it in the last five minutes before the meeting ended. But I've actually grown to enjoy it, and I really value working with Mr. Morosky.
Okay, so that would take care of it, as long as board members do not have a problem with Ms. Bolton being on three committees.
Well, I'm sure they will.
I don't have a problem with that. So, Mr. Morosky, do you agree to come off of health and safety?
I agree to come off of health and safety, and I'd be honored to chair policy if the committee sees that. That'd be great.
Okay, so let me repeat what I heard. So finance committee assignments, Bates, Bolton, Messer. Policy committee, Bolton, Lindy, Morosky. Student achievement committee, Bolton, Bowers, Lindy. Health and safety committee, Bates, Bowers, Messer. Ad hoc committee is dropped. Does that sound right? Wonderful, okay. Uh-oh, something happened, I lost my visual. What happened?
We can, we can hear you and see you.
Okay. Hold on, there, I don't know what happened. Okay, I might have pushed the button. All right, so we have, we have our board committee assignments done. So we could run down, and we're at seven o'clock, so I'm going to run through this pretty quickly, okay? So at the bottom, where we have our appointments, Cincinnati Recreation Commission, interest by Melanie Bates. Just if you could just say yes or no, I appreciate it.
I would like to continue on the Rec Commission.
Yes, okay, ODE Educator Stanford Board, Ms. Bolton?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Ohio School Board Association appointments, that's the Board of Trustees in the Southwest region, that would be me. Okay, Board Member Cabinet, Ms. Bolton, your name is on there?
Yes, I've been appointed again.
And, and I want to make sure that people understand this, so just because Ms. Bolton's name appears on a lot of these, she absolutely gets appointed, which is different than it being an open nomination or appointment. So whenever it comes time for a reappointment, we would, may consider reexamining that, okay? The Diversity and Equity Committee is by appointment, and it's not scheduled until like midsummer. Okay, Federal Relations Network, Network, First Congressional District, Ms. Bolton, is that an appointment, I believe?
Yes, ma'am, that's for the First Congressional District, NSBA.
Okay, Legislative Liaison, we do not have anyone represent that. And I'm not quite sure Mr. Lindy and Mr. Morosky are interested, um, or unless, Mr. Morosky, you have a question or are you interested?
No, I'm interested, um, I had done it, I, for, I think it was my first year, it was my first year. Um, we can have two people, we did it, Ozzy and I both kind of shared duty, but Mr. Lindy wants to do it, we can have two people.
Okay. I have a question, President Jones?
Yes, Mr. Lindy?
If it's timely, I think, um, I, what I'd shared in, in, on my form and what's noted there is I genuinely am happy to go wherever it's most helpful. Um, to the extent that it's possible, I'd love to get experience with something different from the Business Advisory Council, only because I served on that last year. Um, if that's where I'm most helpful and most needed, happy to go back, I think Brittany does a great job. Um, but if, if, um, if, if there's some chance to get to learn something new, uh, I have a life preference for that.
Okay, well, we have assigned both you and Mike Morosky to the Legislative Liaison. So, you know, you'll both need to get information on that. Okay, the Urban School District Advisory Network and, uh, Ms. Bolton is the, uh, board, board member who attends regularly. I sat in that, but we can also have two people for that, or anybody can attend. Ms. Bolton, are you wanting to continue?
Yes, it's, uh, yes.
And is there anybody else who will want to begin to receive the information on it? Okay. Student Achievement Liaison, Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Okay, Ohio High School Athletic Association Liaison, Ms. Bowers?
Yes.
Okay, State Report Card Reform Group, Ms. Bolton?
Yes.
Okay, uh, Activities Beyond the Classroom, we have, uh, Ms. Bolton and Mr. Messer?
Yes, for me.
Yes, for me.
Okay.
Yeah, and I think, well, the only thing I was going to say was, um, a lot of that because of COVID, kind of got punted.
Right, we know, yeah.
I kind of was waiting to do something last year and it never really happened because everything kind of got put on hold. And we had a conversation right at the end of the year, but yeah.
Yeah, okay. So the Business Advisory Council does not have a board representative, we need one. Um, is there anybody who might be interested in that one? I'm not really sure what they do or how we're involved. Can somebody help me with that?
I can speak to that.
Go ahead.
Um, so, um, Brittany, um, on Assistant Superintendent Murphy's team has put together a really nice group of, um, business leaders from a nice cross-section of major employers in Cincinnati. Um, and she's provided, uh, updates on, um, number of students choosing that third post-graduation pathway, um, uh, which has been really interesting to learn about, they've talked about the career fairs that they've held, um, often getting interesting ideas from different employers about, um, how to put more opportunities in front of students. Um, it was interesting, that it needs, um, yeah.
How, how often does that group meet?
I want to say once a month, um, but.
Not sure, okay, Mr. Messer?
I think the only, the only other thing is, I think that, and I think, uh, somebody could correct me if I'm wrong here, but I believe that fulfilled the requirement of the governor when he took office, that each district was to have a group like that. So, uh,
Okay.
It kind of morphed to fulfill that need, as I understand.
I, 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 I have, I have an interest, I, it, it really just, first of all, kind of all depends. I mean, if they're meeting with regularity and what have you more than once a month, I don't know that I could do it. But I, I'm happy to represent the board, um, on that committee. Ms. Bolton?
Uh, having been on it when we first realized it was required by law, and we, we, we used to count the CBC as our business, uh, committee that was required by law for 20 years. Uh, knowing what they're doing with career efforts and, uh, what Brittany Cousins and, uh, Shawna Murphy are working through it, it'd be great, actually, President Jones, if you would serve on it. It's, it's, it's a good liaison with business folks, plus it is about especially, uh, career readiness.
I, I am happy to serve on that committee, okay. All right, Council of Great City Schools, Ms. Bates, you still interested?
Well, I was going to suggest, since I have, Cincinnati Rec is a minimum of two meetings a month, three, no, two meetings a month. Uh, the two committee, uh, commitments, and, uh, if you're on financial, you're on audit. So Council of Great City Schools have, has added a Zoom meeting on Friday, so not mandatory. And I've been, because of a family commitment, I've had some trouble making that Zoom meeting. I make them maybe, oh, maybe about once or twice a month instead of weekly. So if somebody else would like to learn something new, like Mr. Lindy, I know Mr. Morosky has a great interest in federal legislation and advocacy, I would step aside to allow, uh, someone else take that.
Mr. Morosky is raising his hand and I know he expressed interest last year to kind of join you with that. Uh, Mr. Morosky, would you be interested?
I would, and I've done it, um, twice before, so I'm, yeah, I'm, I love the Council of Great City Schools. As Ms. Bates knows, um, I got a lot of value off, uh, going to those conferences and networking and whatnot, so I'd be happy to do it again.
Wonderful, you're assigned, okay. So the Preschool Expansion Partnership Committee, that committee doesn't exist anymore. Um, I think, uh, after we went through that phase, I believe Ryan was involved with, uh, Cheryl Ryan, Superintendent, and Vera were directly with Baalwachara, and I continue to be involved with the Board President. I think that was satisfied with requirement for the preschool expansion piece. So we can agree to scratch that as a formal assignment, we would be fine. Okay, so, so would you like me to read it again? I'll do that, okay. Cincinnati Rec Commission, the States, ODE Educator Standards Board, Ms. Bolton, Ohio Schools Board Association Appointment, Carolyn Jones, Board Member Cabinet, Ms. Bolton, Diversity and Equity, um, pending assignment request. Federal Relations Network, Ms. Bolton, Legislative Liaison, Ms. Lindy and Mr. Morosky. The Urban School District Advisory Network, Ms. Bolton, Student Achievement Liaison, Ms. Bowers. OH, OH, Ohio High School Athletic Association Liaison, Ms. Bowers. Um, State Report Card Reform Workgroup, Ms. Bolton, Activities Beyond the Classroom, Ms. Bolton and Mr. Messer, Business Advisory Council, Ms. Jones, Council of Great City Schools, Mr. Morosky. Okay, so, we've heard that, we are now ready, um, to take the vote. I need a motion to approve the 2021 Board of Education organizational structure.
Delivered.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye.
Aye.
Oppose? Motion to exempt the organizational structure is approved, wonderful. Okay, so we have, uh, we have one resolution, uh, to approve, the 2021, to present, to approve the, the, uh, organization meeting business item. Um, I'm going to ask Mr. Messer as Vice President, do you have this in front of you?
Let me just make sure I got, I think I've got everything but that.
Okay, does anybody have it in front of them, otherwise I can do it, go ahead, Ms. Bowers?
Um, since the Cincinnati Public Schools, I have before me a resolution to approve the 2021 organizational meeting business items. I submit this resolution for approval.
Thank you, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Miss?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Okay, having no other business before us but the organizational meeting, I declare this meeting adjourned. And it, we are 7:11, first of all, do folks need a couple of minutes or can we move right into the meeting?
I need a minute.
You need a minute, okay, uh, let's do a couple of minutes, uh, break, come back in, in two or three minutes if we can, and we'll get started.
Carolyn?
Yes?
Are we, yeah?
Just to remind, we are still public.
Uh, yeah.
That's fine, will we, um, have time at the, uh, meeting on Saturday to determine our committee schedules?
Uh.
The elect chair and all that? I don't think it'll take long, I just.
Um, I think, I, I don't, not in the formal agenda.
Okay.
We, we just won't, however, I think is, I think if people, and I'm, I'm glad you raised that question because we probably should have talked about it in the organizational meeting. But, um, if the, if the existing chairs want to try to get together or something, um, on that day, like after the meeting or something, schedule their next meeting and figure out the new chairs, that would be fine. Yeah.
Cool.
Okay.
Does that have to be done at the meeting, Carolyn? The election of chairs for this year? At the chair, at the committee meeting?
Yeah.
That's, but yeah, it has to be, you should determine your chair at your first meeting, that's correct?
Well, we can do our schedule, like Mike said, maybe, and, you know, maybe not formally on Saturday.
But, could I, could I interrupt and suggest something, maybe? The way we maintain president and vice president, if you look at the makeup of these committees, now, all the chairs could remain as chairs from this past year to this coming year. I mean,
They, they, they could, except if they choose not to, then you would have to, yeah.
Right, but I'm just saying that it might be, it might be a reasonable suggestion that maybe it won't take that much time, if that's how it pans out, because you have the existing chairs, um, on each of the committees.
I, I, I think that would be fine, I mean, I, I think you guys as the committee structure would have to determine that. But I, um, I would say, I, I mean, I'm okay with that, it makes sense. That the existing chairs, um, can schedule the next meeting or whatever, and then at your new committee meeting, if you do.
Hey, thank you. Our next speaker is Erin Up. Go ahead, Ms. Up.
Oh.
Yep, unmute.
There we go. Sorry. My name is Erin Up, and I, I am advocating for a return to in-person five days a week. How long do our kids have to continue to be responsible for the health of every adult they encounter? The overwhelming research coming out now says that schools are safe to remain open, but this board continues to make decisions that do not align with this. Furthermore, the union president makes remarks revealing her fears and feelings about new recommendations, but frankly, policy cannot be based on emotion. It needs to be based on data and research. So, let's take a look at some numbers. Twenty-four percent and thirty-one percent, the increase in mental health visits to the ER for ages five to eleven and twelve to seventeen. Thirteen, the number of sophomores at one high school that have been hospitalized with mental health issues. Six hundred thousand, the amount of money that the district is saving in transportation costs by keeping Walnut Kids at home. The question mark number, how many kids have transferred to other schools? In regards to research, the American Academy of Pediatrics revealed in a study, and I quote, "Almost six months into the pandemic, accumulating evidence and collective experience argue that children are less important drivers of COVID than adults." A new study out of Tulane University examined how reopening schools in person have affected COVID outcomes. Researchers found no evidence that reopening schools increased COVID hospitalizations. Lastly, Governor DeWine is quoted as saying, "All families that want their children to learn fully in person should be able to have that option again. This decision will always be up to parents. Parents know what is best for their kids. I know my kids need to be in person to learn best. When will this board allow this mom to choose what is best for her kids?" Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Lee Salinger, followed by Jessica Donovan. Go ahead, Lee.
Hi.
Go ahead, Lee.
Okay, thank you so much. My name is Lee Salinger, and I am calling to support an immediate return to full-time, five-day, in-person learning for our students, including the students at Walnut Hills High School. Number one, we know school is safe. We have known this for a while now. Number two, as we parents know, the children are struggling in every way imaginable, academically, mentally, physically. We need, as a district, you guys actually, because I think a lot of the parents are already there, need to continue to evolve with the science as it comes out. We need to adopt the new quarantine policies, and that will significantly reduce the teacher absenteeism that was the reason you all shut us out of school. The Board of Education, Education needs to stop giving us this lip service about how you follow the data. If you were following the data, we'd already be back in school, because the science says school should be open. Please return our students to school five days in person immediately. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Followed by Mary Ann Griffin.
Hi, I just wanted to echo my sentiments. My, my camera's not working while I'm driving, but I just want to echo my sentiments for returning to classroom five days a week, including Walnut Hills. I agree with the previous parents that we need to be following the data. I, myself, are high risk, but we need to be, we need to be making decisions that are at the best interests of our students, and, and I agree, stop playing, paying lip service to all the misinformation. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mary Ann Griffin, followed by Luke Blocher. Go ahead, Ms. Griffin.
Hi, everyone. Thanks for the time today. Columbia University recently published a survey of 100,000 schools representing 40 million students in the U.S. They found that only one-third of white students are attending schools that rely heavily on remote learning. That compares to almost 60% of non-white students. Your policies with regard to this pandemic unfortunately serve further the gap in achievement between white and minority students in our community. Further, The Washington Post recently published an article highlighting the evolution and approach to education during the pandemic by large urban schools, which Cincinnati Public Schools is one of. In September, only 24 of 100 large urban districts were open for school. By December, that number had risen to more than 70. It is time for our kids to go back to school. My kids have not set foot in a classroom since March 15th. We're four days away, a 10-month mark at home. At Walnut Hills High School, my kids have only 24 hours per week of remote education. Every Wednesday is a holiday. There is zero teacher-led instruction for the entire day. That represents 11,400 minutes, or 190 hours, or almost five full weeks of education they have missed out on. And that is only for the first half of this year. I implore you to think creatively about how to get our kids back to school full-time. Walnut Hills overcrowding has never been addressed in this forum. Walnut has 3,000 kids, almost 10% of the district represented. Our kids are being left behind socially, emotionally, and academically, and we need to address this issue. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Luke Blocher, followed by Kevin Corey. Go ahead, Mr. Blocher.
Thank you, Dan. Hello, everybody. I'm here again to support return to school when that is determined to be safe, and I think there's a lot of evidence to support that it could be safe sooner rather later. I appreciate what I understand to be the efforts by the governor to accelerate vaccines to teachers to allow that to happen in schools. I do want to just say, highlight two things for consideration in these discussions as they go on, and I know there's a retreat this weekend to discuss these issues as well. First is, as has been mentioned, I think one of the outcomes of this year has been a big differentiation, differentiating between the folks who have in school and the folks who don't, which is, I think, you know, inevitably contributing to gaps in our society that already existed. And I think the one challenge I want to offer to the district, but also to each school, and I say this to myself as a member of an LSTMC, is to, when we do come back, and I do believe that we are going to come back at some point, and I certainly hope that's the case, that we not just come back, which of course will be, you know, wonderful, but we think about what are the things we are going to do intentionally to address this past year and to address some of the challenges people have faced in, during the year. And so, and I don't know if that involves, you know, ideas like extended, extending the school year or having summer programming, but I do want to encourage the board to be thinking creatively about that as we move forward, including especially trying to maximize whatever value comes out of stimulus packages out of Washington, that we think hard now about how that money can be used to specifically address catching up and getting us back to the beginning of next school year, to, you know, as close to we can be, as close to where it would have been had the year been normal as we can. But thank you all, and I want to encourage you to focus specifically on that as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Kevin Corey, followed by Ashley Tolekonski. Go ahead, Mr. Corey.
Good evening to all. First of all, I'd like to say that I applaud the board for your actions during the COVID-19. I know it's hard. I understand the challenges as it relates to safety and also what's, what's best for all. I have been in meetings with Laura Mitchell. Laura, I don't know you, but I've been in meetings with you. You may have saw me or noticed me. But I come to the state of Ohio, 2012. I came here as Chief of Police of Lincoln Heights. I retired from the Fort Wayne Police Department while in Fort Wayne as Indiana School Research Officer Founder and also statewide president, school safety specialist, and I know the problems. I want to be a part of the solution. Please feel free to reach out to me. My number, (513) 426-3067. I am the director of the Wesley Chapel Mission Center, and I'm looking forward to working with you, being part of the solution, because I already know the problems that you're presenting with. God bless you. Have a great evening.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Ashley Tolekonski. Go ahead, Ms. Tolekonski.
I'll try this again. Sorry. I got on right at 6:30, and then I left the house for five minutes, and then that's when you called me, and I couldn't get on. Anyway, I don't even really have anything prepared. I just felt like I should come on and at least say that I want the kids back in school. The kids need to be back in school, hopefully five days a week. They miss their friends. They miss their teachers. I mean, our teachers have done a wonderful job with their online stuff. They've been, okay, they've been doing stuff to help them, like, talk to their friends during lunch. I mean, it's wonderful, but they need to be back in school. Life is going on everywhere else. I mean, people are at Target, people are at soccer tournaments, hockey practice. I mean, everybody's doing everything except for us. So, I hope that we're going back to school very soon, and I hope it's going to be five days in person, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Right, Jack? Jack?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. That, that's the end of our speakers this evening. President Jones. I think you're muted still, Ms. Jones.
I hardly ever mute, so, okay. All right. Thanks again to our public for being patient and for coming on with us. So, before we get to our announcements, I'm going to ask board members to have handy your resolutions, because I'm going to be calling on individuals, and you may not know it's going to be you, so if you could have your resolutions and things prepared, that would be great. Okay, so, does anyone have any kudos? I do. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Morosky. You go first.
I was going to say kudos to everybody on their elections, President Messer, Vice, or Vice President Messer, President Jones, and everybody in their committee appointments, and I look forward to an awesome year with everybody as we navigate the waters that we're in, and it's good to be back with all of you. So, kudos, kudos to everybody.
Thank you. Any other kudos? I have one. Ms. Bowers, please unmute.
Yes, I have kudos to superintendent for your guidance and direction and empathy regarding the situation that happened in the Capitol last week that you sent out to staff, and I gathered through a part, through partners, the information, but also I've heard from several students that they were able to process in a safe platform and digest and dialogue about the situation, and it was well, well-received, and they appreciated that opportunity. So, kudos to you for, for encouraging that, the opportunity for that platform, conversation to happen in that platform of classrooms.
Okay. Any other kudos? And I'll offer mine. So, I, I make no bones about being partial to the elementary jazz orchestra who performed last week with the Jazz International, some kind of Jazz International Conference. Superintendent was there to give
First is, as has been mentioned, I think one of the outcomes of this year has been a big differentiating, differentiating between the folks who have in school and the folks who don't, which is, I think, you know, inevitably contributing to gaps in our society that already existed. And I think the one challenge I want to offer to the district, but also to each school, and I say this to myself as a member of an LSTMC, is to, when we do come back, and I do believe that we are going to come back at some point, and I certainly hope that's the case, that we not just come back, which of course will be, you know, wonderful, but we think about what are the things we are going to do intentionally to address this past year and to address some of the challenges people have faced during the year. And so, and I don't know if that involves, you know, ideas like extending the school year or having summer programming, but I do want to encourage the board to be thinking creatively about that as we move forward, including especially trying to maximize whatever value comes out of stimulus packages out of Washington, that we think hard now about how that money can be used to specifically address catching up and getting us back the beginning of next school year too, you know, as close to we can be, as close to where it would have been had the year been normal as we can. But thank you all, and I want to encourage you to focus specifically on that as we move forward.
Okay, thank you. Our next speaker is Kevin Corey, followed by Ashley Tolekonsky. Go ahead, Mr. Corey.
Good evening to all. First of all, I'd like to say that I applaud the board for your actions during the COVID-19. I know it's hard. I understand the challenges as it relates to safety and also what's, what's best for all. I have been in meetings with Laura Mitchell. Laura, I don't know you, but I've been in meetings with you. You may have saw me or noticed me. But I come to the state of Ohio. 2012, I came as Chief of Police of Lincoln Heights. I retired from the Fort Wayne Police Department while in Fort Wayne as Indiana School Resource Officer, founder, and also statewide president, school safety specialist. And I know the problems. I want to be a part of the solution. Please feel free to reach out to me. My number, 513-426-3067. I am the pastor of the Wesley Chapel Mission Center, and I'm looking forward to working with you, being part of the solution, because I already know the problems that you're presenting with. God bless you. Have a great evening.
Hey, thank you. Our next speaker is Ashley Tolekonsky. Go ahead, Ms. Tolekonsky.
Try this again. Sorry, I got on right at 6:30, and then I left the house for five minutes, and then that's when you called me, and I couldn't get on. Anyway, I don't even really have anything prepared. I just felt like I should come on and at least say that I want the kids back in school. The kids need to be back in school, hopefully five days a week. They miss their friends. They miss their teachers. I mean, our teachers have done a wonderful job with their online stuff. They've been, okay, they've been doing stuff to help them, like, talk to their friends during lunch. I mean, it's wonderful, but they need to be back in school. Life is going on everywhere else. I mean, people are at Target, people are at soccer tournaments, hockey practice. I mean, everybody's doing everything except for us. So I hope that we're going back to school very soon, and I hope it's going to be five days in person, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Right, Jack? All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you. That's the end of our speakers this evening. President Jones. I think you're muted still, Ms. Jones.
I hardly ever mute, so, okay. All right. Thanks again to our public for being patient and for coming on with us. So before we get to our announcements, I'm going to ask board members to have handy your resolutions, because I'm going to be calling on individuals, and you may not know it's going to be you. So if you could have your resolutions and things prepared, that would be great. Okay, so does anyone have any kudos? I do. Okay, go ahead, Mr. Morosky. You go first.
I was going to say, kudos to everybody on their elections, President Messer, Vice, or Vice President Messer, President Jones, and everybody in their committee appointments. And I look forward to an awesome year with everybody as we navigate the waters that we're in. And it's good to be back with all of you. So kudos, kudos to everybody.
Thank you. Any other kudos? I have one. Ms. Bowers, please unmute.
Yes, I have kudos to Superintendent for your guidance and direction and empathy regarding the situation that happened in the Capitol last week that you sent out to staff and I gathered through partners of the information, but also I've heard from several students that they were able to process and they save platform and digest and dialogue about the situation, and it was well, well received, and they appreciated that opportunity. So kudos to you for encouraging that, the opportunity for that platform, conversation to happen in that platform of classrooms.
Okay. Any other kudos? And I'll offer mine. So I make no bones about being partial to the elementary jazz orchestra who performed last week with the Jazz International, some kind of Jazz International Conference. Superintendent was there to give her a welcome and her thanks and expressed appreciation to the Kennedy Heights Arts Center for allowing our students to use their space. One thing I was so impressed with, and I intend to follow up with, with Dr. Rudnick, the way they handled the COVID, social distancing and whatever. These kids played their instruments with their masks on, and they figured out it was a specially-made mask that covered everything except the little part where they put the instrument in their mouth. It was dynamic. They were excellent as usual. They were excited, and they were on a national platform. And I was so pleased and enjoyed them thoroughly. So I want to say kudos to them, kudos to Dr. Rudnick, and I look forward to the next one. Thank you. All righty, moving on. Ms. Bates, do we have any retirements?
Yes, we have two retirements that I will announce tonight. And the first one is from our certificated staff. Charlene Myers, Principal at Riverview East, is retiring. And from our civil service staff, Janet Fine, Senior Accounting Technician. So we thank these professionals for their support of our children and their contributions to Cincinnati Public Schools and wish them well.
Thank you, Ms. Bates. Okay, so we don't have any board matters tonight. So we're going to move straight into our approval of our resolutions. And Ms. Bowers, as our newly appointed liaison to the, oh, did I do that wrong? Okay, no, not to the school board. But you got the first one. You have the first one.
Wes BA?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. I think I got it. I have before me a resolution to join the Ohio School Boards Association. I present this resolution as written.
Is there a second? I need a second. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Bates. Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates? Ms. Bolton? This is... Yes. Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Morosky. You have the next one?
Awesome. It is my honor to present a resolution to join the Ohio School Boards Association Legal Assistance Fund. I present the resolution as written.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner?
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Mr. Lindy, please present the next resolution.
This is a resolution approving standing authorizations for the superintendent to be able to carry out necessary district duties for calendar year 2021. I present this resolution as written.
Thank you. Is there a second? Is there a second? Thank you. Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer? Mr. Messer?
Aye.
Ms. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Ms. Bates, please present the following resolution.
Yes. I have a resolution approving standing authorizations for the treasurer to be able to carry out necessary district duties for calendar year 2021. I present this resolution as printed for adoption.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner?
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. And the last resolution, Ms. Bolton, please present the following resolution.
Thank you. Present the resolution adopting the modified tax budget.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Thank you. That does it for our resolutions. Superintendent Mitchell, do you have a report? We can't hear you. Okay. Go again? We can't hear you, Superintendent. Am I the only one that can't hear?
No, I can't hear the...
No, we can't hear. Our microphone is off, but we can't hear.
Okay.
We...
I'm muting, not muting her from here, so if it helps.
No.
Okay. Any, Mr. Wilson or Mr. Galloway, are we assisting her?
Ms. Mitchell, you may want to rejoin the meeting.
I am texting her as well.
Okay.
Okay, so while we're waiting, we're going to wait for her to rejoin the meeting. So maybe what we can do is move on to, let's see, with the treasurer's report, if I can have a motion to approve the report of the treasurer.
So moved.
Is there a second? Okay, Ms. Bates, any discussion? Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer?
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Okay, Superintendent is back. Are we going to try again for Superintendent's report? Are you able to hear me now? Yes. Great. Okay, thank you. So I want to highlight just a couple of things while Rob is pulling up my PowerPoint. Next slide, please. So we're excited to be able to open our high school selection process tomorrow. So it begins on January the 12th and extends away until April the 16th. And so if you have a seventh grader in CPS, please select your high school of choice for the upcoming school year. Next slide, please. So we would like to be able to salute our healthcare professionals, especially those who are alumni of CPS. And so Courtney Calvin is a 1998 Hughes High School alumni. She works for Cincinnati Health Department as a public health educator. So hats off to Courtney. Next slide, please. The art museum is a feature that our students have enjoyed for many years over the years. And the Cincinnati Art Museum is offering, they're offering our fourth grade students the opportunity to visit the museum for free. And so this year, this will be a virtual tour for over 3,000 of our fourth grade students. Next slide, please. So many of you know that we offer our food distribution every Wednesday at every single one of our locations. And you do not have to attend the school that you go to to get the meal, if that's the school that's closest to you. In addition to those food hubs being open in every single one of our schools, we are now also going to have a pop-up food truck service system. And so this food truck will be at 10 sites across the district and across the city, and they will distribute seven meals for our young people. So we're excited to be able to offer this additional service for our families and our students. And then last slide, last but not least, you know that we are celebrating Martin Luther King Jr.'s birthday on Monday, and on Tuesday is the National Day of Racial Healing. And so our teachers will receive information about this day in terms of how they may host conversations within their classrooms. This was actually started by the Kellogg Foundation, and so we are encouraging people to really get engaged and get involved in this day. And that concludes my oral report. Thank you. Thank you, Superintendent. Do I have a motion to approve the recommendations of the superintendent?
So moved.
Thank you. Ms. Bates, do you second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? Okay, Ms. Wagner, please call the roll.
Mrs. Bates?
Aye.
Ms. Bolton?
Aye.
Mrs. Bowers?
Yes.
Mr. Lindy?
Yes.
Mr. Messer? Mr. Messer?
You're muted, Mr. Messer.
Yes.
Mr. Morosky?
Yes.
President Jones?
Yes. Okay, any inquiries and updates? Just one update from me, in case you haven't seen the email I sent regarding Saturday's meeting. I'm asking you to please respond by tomorrow, so that Mr. Messer and our facilitator, Yolanda Carter, we will have a conversation tomorrow to finalize it. It is, it is agenda heavy, and we'll work on to streamline as much as we're able to do. But your feedback is important, so please respond. Also, our ladies in the office have sent out emails regarding your lunch requests for Saturday. So if you want to order lunch, please do so. And also, Superintendent, for those who are from the administrative team, going to be who want lunch, please, we want to get that resolved. Okay. Any other inquiries and updates? Yes, sir, Mr. Morosky?
Got ahead of myself. I was waiting for a time, and sorry.
Oh, okay. That's okay. Are there any assignments, Mr. Morosky?
There is. Funny you should ask. I was hoping that at our, at our next meeting, we could get an update, whether it's through the superintendent's report, if Superintendent Mitchell, if you're, if you think you're the right person for it, or somebody else, Deputy Amat. I would just, I would love to see, I brought this up in student achievement, I think. But I don't think, I know I did. I think it was in our last meeting of the year, or second to last. I would love to see what the results of the Iowa were across the board. And the reason I ask is I'm not as much interested necessarily in, you know, all of the passage rates, even though that is interesting to me, to see how many people pass. But what I'm most interested in is who got to take the test since it's administered in school. And I know we got an update. Deputy Amat said there were going to be a lot of makeup opportunities, so that was great in student achievement. Now that we have some of the scores, I think it'd be instructive just to know, like, what that kind of looks like, just to make sure that, you know, are we hitting the same mark? Are kids, and is it equitable across the board as far as opportunities to take it, and what the passage rates look like? Does that make sense? Because I know it was currently very different with the blended and, you know, virtual, so.
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Bowers?
Just an update, Mike, of Board Member Morosky. They were planned to do that on the 8th of January. We were set to do that, but we had not did the organizational meeting yet. So they do have that information.
Great. And student achievement, you mean?
Yeah, they're going to do it.
Could we, I think, I think that'd be something maybe neat for the full board, if that, if that's possible, just so we could have an idea what that looked like this fall...
Absolutely. I think they're ready. I was just wanting to let you know they had it ready to prepare.
Yeah, I get it.
Okay, thank you. Any other assignments? Okay, so that is bringing us to the end. Thank you all for aiding, as always. It's, we always do what we need to do, and let's take care of our business. So having no other business before us, I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you.